at the Waterbury Arts Magnet School. We'll begin this evening with a silent prayer. We have a memorial from Deputy Superintendent Henry.
Good evening.
Evening.
In our moment of silence this evening, let us remember Mr. James Petit, who passed away on April 24th. He was a teacher for 35 years, first at Walsh Elementary, and subsequently he went on to finish his career at Kennedy High School, retiring from there in 1995. So, we ask us to please remember Mr. Petit and recognize his service and dedication on behalf of our students.
Thank you. Commissioner Thiria, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome, everyone.
Commissioner Watt?
Here.
Vice President Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno?
Here.
Commissioner Sando?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Thiria?
Here.
Commissioner Jason Beanstone?
Present.
Commissioner Tom Beanstone?
Present.
President Brown?
Present. Thank you. We have a quorum. Next, it's our pleasure to award some well-deserved presentations. Deputy Superintendent Henry.
Yes. It is my great pleasure to recognize these two schools. These two schools happen to be magnet schools that have been awarded national certification by the Magnet Schools of America Organization. And it's important to note that it's a very arduous process. I see some tired folks even now. It's a process that takes anywhere from six months to a year, and they're required to actually go through five pillars of requirements in which they have to demonstrate that they've been extremely successful at them. And so, it is from that perspective that, having achieved that particular status, we wanted to recognize them officially on behalf of the administration and the school board itself. It's a certification that lasts for four years, and we must realize there are fewer than 200 schools nationwide that actually have achieved that. And to have two of them right here in our midst is an extraordinary accomplishment. When they receive their respective certification, part of it reads, "As a nationally certified magnet school, your school has demonstrated through evidence, reflection, and strategic action that you have established the standards of excellence in your school and fulfill the commitment to your community stakeholders." And it's with that that we'd like to bring up the respective principals. One for our illustrious Rotella School, which was the first one to achieve the honor. And yes, you can give applause. And so... This is presented by the Waterbury Board of Education to Rotella Inter-District Magnet School in recognition of being named nationally certified magnet school by the Magnet Schools of America for providing quality education and meeting the standards of excellence. April 26.
Do you have any of your staff with you, any of your faculty with you?
Our art teachers, unfortunately. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Well, congratulations to the staff, the students, and parents of Rotella School.
Thank you. We did have another parent that was in the museum, so some of whom are there.
Very busy.
And our representatives from Maloney... Yes. Oh, there you are. Congratulations. And so, it reads similarly, "Presented by the Waterbury Board of Education to Maloney Inter-District Magnet School in recognition of being named nationally certified magnet school by the Magnet Schools of America for providing quality education and meeting the standards of excellence." Now, congratulations again.
Forgot the other side. Congratulations. That's a great honor. Next, could I please have a motion for number five, Communications?
Motion to receive and place on file communications as listed.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you. Next is approval of minutes for March 1st, 2018 workshop and March 15th, 2018 regular meeting. Could I have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes of March 1st, 2018 and March 15th, 2018.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Next, could I have a motion for the public?
Motion to suspend a regular order of business to hear from the public.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. All speakers are encouraged to submit prepared written statements to the commissioners. Comments shall be limited to a maximum of five minutes. There will be no responses directly to the person speaking this evening, but any questions raised will be referred to administration for review and response. Okay? First on the speaker's list is Joan Cavallari.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Joan Cavallari. I am a behavior therapist, and I have been employed by the city for nine years. I have worked at General Alley School for those nine years. I'm here to ask you to please reconsider your plan to privatize the ABA program. There are several reasons for that. The first one is that there will be 40 therapists that will be unemployed. They will be collecting unemployment, which the city will have to pay for, and I don't know that you have figured that into your budget. Next, you will have less qualified, less experienced people working with our students. ABA therapists are required to have a BS, Bachelor's Degree, and many of us have a Master's Degree. We are also required to have one-year experience working with people with autism before we are hired. And we also do management guidelines. We do behavior guidelines. We put together program books based on the children's IEPs. We gather materials, and then we implement all of that. Behavior RBTs, or Registered Behavior Technicians, as you want to hire, only need to have a high school diploma. They have to complete 40 hours of training, and then they need to be supervised by a BCDA. They cannot do what we do. They cannot write management guidelines. They cannot do behavior guidelines because they don't have the bachelor's. State law requires people with bachelor's or higher to be able to do these things. So, that's a very big disadvantage. The most important reason not to change this program is the children. The children, our children, have a very difficult time with change. And to take 40 therapists away from them at one time and then put all new faces to them would have devastating effects on them and their behaviors at school and at home. So, it not only affects the children, it's also going to affect the family. I fear summer school, the first day, July 7th... July 9th, I'm sorry, when these children are expecting to see all their therapists that they've worked with through the year. And some have known us since their very first year at General Alley, starting in kindergarten. They get off the bus, and not one person do they know. They see a sea of unfamiliar faces. I know from experience, I work with children, two of them have the tendency to bolt. I already know that. I'm already prepared. These people have no idea who these children are. They have no idea what will happen. I do know there will be catastrophic, disastrous things that will happen that day. Kids will be running in all directions. Kids will be screaming, and they will be acting out aggressively because of their frustration, because they don't understand what's going on. They can't express themselves like you and I. We can ask those questions. Who are you? Why are you here? Where's my therapist? These children, most of them, do not have that ability. So, their actions are a reflection of their frustration. We, as therapists, try and work on their communication skills to have them be able to express some things in any which way of their communication. Not all of them are verbal. Many of our children have very limited language. Some of them use iPads. Some of them use picture packs. Some of them use sign language. If you're unfamiliar with that, if you're unfamiliar with that, then I'm afraid that you're going to have very sad effects of what will happen. I'm asking you to please come spend one day, all of you, in any of our ABA programs and see what we do. That's the only way you're going to understand that keeping this program the way it is is the best choice for the children. You don't fix what isn't broken, and this has worked for 14 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the public speaker's agenda is Rebecca Shaw.
Honored School Board, I'm Rebecca Shaw of 456 Willow Street. I've been a parent in this district for 10 years. I've spoken before you once before and came again at other times to support others speaking to you. I felt a need to come again because of my concerns regarding parent involvement. During all of these years, I hear repeatedly that the schools want more parent involvement. You want us to be partners with the school, yet I don't see true evidence of this. Yes, there are PTO meetings and tons of family events, but that does not make us true partners. True partners help work out problems together. They work together to make the experience better for our students. I want to address three concerns in this area. The first concern is the school environment. I recognize that I may only be speaking out of my experience at Buxhallianics, Kingsbury Elementary School, and North End Middle School, but I believe my experience is not unique. I recognize that there's a need for greater security in light of events happening in the world. But I also feel it's important to consider how some policies we make at the district or school level affect the environment. If we are making policies out of fear, then the feeling at the school will be one of fear and distrust. At Kingsbury, on the first day of school, parents are no longer allowed to visit the upper-grade classrooms to meet their child's teacher. The first day of school is traditional... The first day of school is traditionally one of great anticipation and excitement for parents and children. Many parents take time off of work to take their children to school and meet their child's teacher on this special day. When policies like the one at Kingsbury are in place, feelings of frustration and resentment are more likely to occur. The second concern I'd like to address is one about how frustrating it is to parents like me that want to make a positive difference to have our ideas be continually shot down. I have talked to three different principals at Kingsbury about the possibility of having kids there perform a play that I wrote about how Frederick Douglass learned how to read and write. I even trained with Shakespearean to make sure I could make the experience very educational. Each principal thought a play at the school level was a great idea. At least two of them read my script and all of them said they were willing to let it happen, but then it felt like swimming in molasses to actually make it happen. It felt like they were saying yes on the one hand and saying no way on the other. My third concern regards the many other issues that are happening in and around our schools. Some of the issues at Kingsbury are parking at pickup times, absenteeism, and only having one room as a cafeteria, auditorium, and gymnasium. There are many parents that are as concerned about these as the educators. However, a meeting where we are talked to about the problem of absenteeism is not high on our list of meetings to attend. On the other hand, if we are engaged in a discussion about the problems and possible solutions, you might be surprised at the results. I'm still not one for laying down complaints without possible solutions, so my biggest recommendation is that you make more policies that encourage true parent-school partnering. What about a policy that parents should have access to teachers the morning of the first day of school? How about a policy that requires schools to sponsor an event that parents initiate and lead? Is there a policy that can be made that ensures parents can be part of the discussion to find solutions for the problems at their school? I hope you will consider these concerns and strive to make Waterbury Schools true partners with parents. And then I just want to add one more comment. I have been trained as a special educator, and I have friends that have tried to work with your system with kids with autism. I want you to also consider the possibility that you have to send a whole lot more students out of the district, and I know that's really expensive for you, so please consider their plea. Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the public who wishes to speak this evening that did not sign up?
Richard Wood, Avalon Circle, Waterbury. I hadn't planned on speaking until I heard the young lady go over her cheerful pronunciation aids. The thing that I'm hearing from homeless parents is the problems with their children in the schools not being understood as to why their behavior is the way it is. If we cut loose our trained specialists who can supervise this type of individual in special ed, whether they're autistic or have other problems, we're going to have a larger problem and a more expensive problem in the long run. I interviewed three parents today who are homeless. The grandmothers, of course, have the children, like any one of us would have, but the children are still basically homeless, and when they go to the schools, and if they have any problems at all, they are not easily recognized because the staff in the school has not, to my knowledge, been given any training in treating homeless children a little bit differently than those with two parents at home. And this is something that is increasing. Every week, there's more and more homeless, and these children of these parents can cause us an incredible amount of difficulties in the future. I taught a little bit years ago, and I can tell you, looking at some of these kids running around Willow Street, I don't think I could get them to stay in their chairs, never mind teach them anything. And our teachers, and we have a good cadre of great teachers, I know many of them were my clients for years, so I was trained by teachers to recognize good talent. The thing is, we're going to have to think twice about this restructuring and going into privatizing the ABAs and so on. Try spending a day with them, I think that might be something you might want to consider. Seeing it firsthand might give you a different viewpoint. However, I also know as a taxpayer, it's a budgetary item, and money is short, and it's going to get shorter in the future. So when we say we want to do this, are we coming up with the money? Well, there is quite a bit of money floating around in the city. The water department, for one, is giving our money away. We could take that back, and that would provide the funds for these teaching systems that you want to privatize. I do hope I didn't give you anything to worry about and give Thomas more gray hair, but I do wish you luck. We do have a good board. The one thing that the population in the city and the parents need to recognize, being on the Board of Education is not just a challenge, it's a commitment to excellence, because you all are responsible for the quality of education of our children. And from what I can see, you're doing a good job with what you have to work with. Peace be with you.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to return to the regular order of business?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Deputy Superintendent Henry.
I'd like to begin this evening's report by congratulating our board president, Ms. Elizabeth Brown, and being named United Ways Volunteer of the Year. She will be honored at the United Ways Greater... Excellent.
Thank you.
...Greatwaterberry's 32nd Annual Dinner in May along with other nominees. So, yes, our congratulations, and now you can help me applaud, please. Well deserved. By way of an update, I'd like to indicate that the coherence and capacity review of our district is being conducted. A team of five members have visited with us during the weeks of April 2nd and April 9th. They have conducted numerous interviews of central office staff, school administrators, talked to school board members, have conducted a number of focus groups, and began analyzing some of the data that would help us set up, or at least receive, the feedback that would help us continue with our district improvement strategic planning. We'd like to also extend congratulations to one of our students, Tiana Pulliam, a Crosby High School student who has earned an All-State in Class L Girls Basketball Division. Twain is the only student selected from our Waterbury Public Schools, and so we extend our congratulations to her. The next announcement has to do with the fact that twenty-four Waterbury Public School teachers had their Donors Choose projects funded in full recently by the generosity of Ripple, which is a San Francisco-based technology company that donated $29 million to Donors Choose, which allowed them to actually be able to fund just about every proposal that came in front of them. Here in Waterbury, twenty-eight of those projects were funded, totaling close to $20,000. So, teachers now have a little more to work with within their respective classrooms. Three Waterbury Public School teachers have been awarded grants for summer projects through Fund for Teachers. Allison, I want to say Kirk Burger, right, from Hopeville School, Kurt Burger, from Hopeville School, and Doreen Lawson from Willby School, they will be traveling this summer to the Czech Republic to study storytelling and memoir writing. While we have still another teacher, Matthew Weiner, from Enlightenment, who will travel to Thailand to study meditation and Buddhism during the summer there. The National Fund for Teachers granted awards to four hundred and eighty-seven teachers this year, and a hundred and forty-nine of those were from right here in Connecticut, and so we congratulate them as well. We have several district-wide events that are occurring in the next few weeks. On Thursday, May 10th, we'll be honoring fifty-one of our students from throughout the district, annual superintendent's student recognition awards intended to be held at Kennedy High School, and they'll begin at 6:00 PM. And this year, we'll be honoring all of the students in one evening. In the past, I understand, it's been two evenings. This is going to be during the one evening again on May 10th. The following week, May 18th, we'll be celebrating parents and community leaders during the Family and Community Leadership Conference. This full-day event will be held at the Nagutak Valley Community College, and the intent there is to have a number of workshops that parents and community folks can participate in, and it'll begin at 12:15 in the college main theater. So again, May 18th. The District-wide Talent Showcase, and this year, we've given it the name of Celebrating Community Through the Arts. That will be held on May 21st at the Palace Theater, and doors will open at 5:00 PM. Folks have been working hard at getting their different acts and presentations ready, and so not only will we have music and dance and those kinds of activities, but we'll also be displaying students' artwork throughout the building, and students in grades four through twelve will be the participants, and we anticipate at this point about nineteen of our schools attending that event. I understand, one of the highlights is then Tom Shute is on board to be our Master of Ceremonies, and then we'll have Michelle Baker and Ray Santovasi as our emcees. Couple more announcements, Leadership Greater Waterbury is hosting a Waterbury Youth Quiz Bowl on Saturday, May 12th, from noon to 4:00 PM at the AOH Club in Waterbury. Eight of our schools and their respective teams will be participating, and the winner will receive not only a trophy, but there's a $500 prize that goes along with that, with the second place being $250. I have been asked to serve as a guest speaker at this year's Greater Waterbury Education Leadership Event at Nagutak Valley Community College this coming Monday, so stay tuned, and the results and ratings will be provided at the next session. On Friday, May 11th, students in K through eight from our school system will be allowed to wear their favorite colored shirt for Waterbury Kids Marathon, which will be taking place, I believe, on May 31st. So students, again, on May 11th, may wear t-shirts of their choice. For example, it could be the Mets, it could be the Yankees, I didn't see Red Sox here, so that's okay, Frozen, Yukon, any t-shirt of their choosing in preparation, again, for the kids marathon that's held, or will be held on May 31st at the Library Park. Our district recently received, raised $2,000, close to $2,700 for muscular dystrophy, and we're proud of that effort. There's one more, I guess, an addendum to the notes that I'd like to share with the board. Could you help me, please? What the addendum indicates is that this is to inform the Board of Education that I will be referring for investigation to the city's Corporation Council's office and the Board of Education Human Resources, the apparent dual role of Commissioner John Thierio as a board member and that of a substitute teacher receiving compensation for services rendered to our students. I believe this to be a violation of Section 10-232 of the Connecticut General Statutes. And this concludes the deputy superintendent's report.
Point of order.
Thank you.
Through the chair, point of order.
Yes, Commissioner Thierio.
That's a misstatement. I am not a substitute teacher. I work for the homebound office, dealing with kids that are infirm and sick. I work two hours a day. I worked in this capacity before I came on this board, and there are other individuals that have capacities in the Education Department, through the Board of Alderman, and others. So...
Thank you for...
I wish to...
Clarify that.
I wish to...
Clarify that. Thank you, Commissioner Thierio.
I am not a substitute teacher.
I'm sorry, what?
I am not a substitute teacher.
Okay. Duly noted. Next is the President's comments.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry.
I have a question for the superintendent.
Commissioner Thierio, yes?
Thank you, Madam President, through you. Before I go into my question, while we're doing congrats, there is also thirty-seven of our teachers on tonight's agenda that have achieved an advanced degree. I would also like to make note of that as well, I usually do when I see that. So congratulations to those individuals who have spent time, their own time, becoming better for our benefit. So, I just want to throw that out there. Thank you, Mr. Henry, for taking my question. Before I ask the question, I just want to give a little past history, based on the fact that a couple of weeks ago, we heard that we were considering, although I'm not sure it's a consider, without our vote, to swap the buildings for the State Street School in Enlightenment. Many folks know that the lease we have on State Street has been something I have contested for many years. I have shown numerous business cases that say it's a bad deal for this board to pay that bill. With that, I've always been told that the current St. Lucy's building is the perfect location for the State Street population. Now, all of a sudden, it's not that we want to swap. So, if we have based a business case decision on the fact that this is the perfect building for this population, why would we ever consider changing that? And part of that argument was, not only is it the perfect building, but what we would do to the students by moving them, and that included when I brought to this board, using this same money to either redo Wallace, which was my number one option, also based on the fact that it had the tremendous medical facility... fact that it had the tremendous medical facilities that could be offered to these students, the change for these students would be detrimental. So, we continued to pay this money on this lease, based on the fact that we would be detrimental to this population. But now, we're going to move them to another facility, and oh, by the way, we're going to upset the population at Enlightenment by moving them, which was also told to us to be a perfect facility for that population. So in a non-voting decision to this board, we're going to move all these students that have such sensitive needs that we could not make a business decision. I am absolutely against this change. We don't get a vote, but I have a voice. I really think we need to reconsider the decision that was shown to this board a few weeks ago, that we're just going to make this decision to swap these two schools. If I really had a choice, we would be in a non-rented building, non-leased building, one we own for these students. So, Mr. Henry, why are we making this decision at this time?
So, Mr. Vanstone, Commissioner Vanstone. Obviously, I do not have all of the history that you've just outlined. In terms of what was before us, it's a recommendation that, having analyzed it with all, with some of those kinds of details, it was considered to be the kind of swap, in terms of the buildings, that would allow for improvement at both ends of the equation. When we talked about the facilities, I guess, at Church Street, and the fact that it will serve that population of youngsters that were coming better, as well as retaining a number of the Enlightenment students, yeah, Enlightenment students, who will remain there at the current site, it seemed that it was a better setting for them, while I also understand, given where the Enlightenment, current Enlightenment folks were going to go, that that facility, having analyzed it by our folks responsible for that, that they will have access to all of the services and more because of the association with PAL and those kinds of services. So, it's from that perspective that it appeared to be sound, and, you know, we have moved forward, recognizing that it was a win-win from many perspectives, you know, and so, you know, that's why the decision was made, or recommendation.
And if I may, I think there's...
Well, if I may follow up, I have the floor. Thank you. The argument you just gave for Enlightenment going to that facility was also part of the argument why we needed the State Street School to stay there. So either something has changed, or for the last five years, I've been lied to.
Okay.
So, I really think we need to reconsider this decision, because something has obviously changed dramatically in the last few weeks compared to what this board has been told for the last five years.
Thank you, and I would say that I've, several members of the board have voiced some concerns and questions, so I think we need to revisit this and hold another meeting, and hopefully get the answers that commissioners want, and I will be asking for a meeting to delve into this, to have another deeper...
Thank you, Madam President.
I would be glad to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Henry.
Because I think we need to all understand...
I know you came into this...
...understand.
That's why I prefaced with the history. I certainly can give you more history...
Right, I am certain.
Because there's more to it than just what I stated. But thank you both, very much.
Glad to do that. Glad to do that, yep. Any other comments? Okay. I have the honor tonight of, it's administrative secretary's appreciation, and because we were not there yesterday, I would like to thank Carrie for all her hard work.
Do you want to rub flowers on her?
And here's some flowers to show our appreciation as a board. And you get to take the bucket home to it. I just have a comment that the, I really appreciate the public speaking tonight, and we would like to know that these discussions are ongoing, decisions are not final as far as the ABAs, and I personally agree with you that we should not privatize, and I'm on record for saying that, as well as other members here. So, we will be looking into that. No decisions are final, okay? Next on the agenda is the consent calendar. Can I have a motion, please?
You have to read the consent calendar. You have to read the consent calendar.
Oh, thank you. Just carry on. Okay, would anybody like to remove anything from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, I will read the consent calendar. 10.1, request approval of a contract with Light Tower Fiber Networks, LLC, for wide-area fiber network. 10.2, request approval to apply for the 2018-2020 CSTE Individuals with Disability Education, IDEA entitlement grant. 10.3, use of school facilities by school organizations and/or city departments. 10.4, use of school facilities by outside organizations and/or waiver requests. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent calendar is read.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. Number 12, Committee on School Personnel, Commissioner Stango.
Item 12.1, request approval of the new position of Grant Facilitator for Carl Perkins. With the approval of the Committee of the Whole, the Committee on School Personnel recommends that the schools, Superintendent of Schools be authorized in... No.
Wrong way. Start again.
Okay. With the approval of the Committee of Personnel, the Deputy Superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the job specs for and new position of Grant Facilitator of the Carl D. Perkins Act as attached. Respectfully submitted.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. 12.2, Commissioner Stango.
12.2, approval to authorize the Superintendent of Schools to notify teachers of non-renewal. Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee of the Whole, the Committee on School Personnel recommends the Deputy Superintendent of Schools be authorized to notify teachers of non-renewal of their employment contracts in accordance with the Connecticut General Statutes, Section 10-151. Respectfully submitted.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. Committee on Finance, Commissioner Awad.
So before I read this, why is this not on consent? It says $700.
It did not go to workshop.
It didn't go to the workshop, thank you. All I needed to know. $700. Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on Finance, the Deputy Superintendent of Schools recommends acceptance of the state and federally funded grant contract between the Department of Economic and Community Development and Rotella School as attached.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Number 14, Superintendent's Notification to the Board. Can I have a motion?
Motion to receive and place on file Superintendent's Notification to the Board, items 14.1 through
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I wish to recuse myself and abstain from item 14.3.
I'm sorry, 14.?
Point three.
Point three, okay, thank you. So noted. Any other? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carries. Okay. 15, unfinished business of preceding meeting only. Commissioner Theriot, no. Any other comments? Okay. 15, unfinished business, I'm sorry, 16, other unfinished, new, and miscellaneous business. Commissioner Theriot. By the way, thank you for this information. I, it's nice to have it in one spot. It was, you know, thank you.
Well, I would like to congratulate Mr. Henry, our acting superintendent, on his new fishing expedition. Obviously, he's going after big fish. He's going after people that rock the boat, make complaints, and he's sure being true to Waterbury politics. Retaliation, retribution, and some other terms there. Intimidation was the word I was looking for. So, true to Waterbury politics, I've always held my cool with regard to Mr. Henry's remarks to me a couple of months ago, where he had a secretary deliver a message to me that was less than flattering, full of intimidation, retribution, and intimidation or retaliation.
All right, point of order.
Point of order. This is true.
This has nothing to do with the agenda.
Yeah, well, he brings me up on charges for teaching, and I can't respond.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Theriot, this is not acceptable. This is, this is something that is out of order right now. We're talking about unfinished business, new and miscellaneous business. Issues of personnel and personality are to be dealt with through Corporation Council or other legal avenues. I appreciate your concern, but this is not...
Then I'll file, I'll file a counter complaint of retaliation regarding his remarks.
Is there any other discussion to make?
Yes, plenty. Before I was on the board this last time, during the four years that I wasn't on the board, I was a part of the Century 21 Grant. I worked at Wall School, where I became very, very sick from the conditions at that school. I was paid by the federal government through the city, and I couldn't work as a board member and hold that job. So, because it's a violation of the Hatch Act. To my knowledge, being a homebound teacher is not a violation of the Hatch Act, because you're not paid by federal funds, you're paid by city funds. So that being said, I want to clarify that, I am not a substitute teacher. I have been a homebound teacher for about four or five years, and I was on the homebound staff before I became a member of this board this last time. And there are other members on this board that work in summer school programs that are paid by city funds, but I noticed that their name wasn't added to the list. But that being said, I look forward to my day, and I'll be out, going out, getting my lawyer, because obviously, I don't get a lawyer from the Corporation Council, only Mr. Henry does. So I'll go out and get my lawyer, and we'll duke it out at the Ethics Board or the Corporation Council or wherever. But it seems like certain individuals in central office can make any disparaging remarks that they want, but when it comes to backing them up and putting them in writing, they won't do that. So they respond and they retaliate by dragging my name...
Point of order.
And my reputation...
Commissioner Theriot...
I didn't mention his name. I said a central office person.
Commissioner Theriot, I think this is inappropriate for, this is, you said your piece...
No, I haven't said my piece.
It will go to the Corporation Council and the Ethics Board or whatever...
Yeah.
But this is not appropriate. It is not on the agenda, and we're not going to have...
Well, he put it on the agenda.
We're calling the question...
Mr. Henry put it on the agenda. What do you mean? It's not on the agenda.
It was not on the agenda. It was part of his presidential.
So he can put it on the agenda, but I can't.
I'm calling a recess, everybody. Calling a recess. Thank you.
Resus.
Resus.
I'm going to file a complaint against him for unnecessary behavior, and you knew about it too. And you said it was a private behavior, a private conflict between the secretary and him, and you did nothing about it, and the Corporation Council did nothing about it. Yeah?
I'm like, this makes...
Move to return to regular order of business.
I would just like to ask the Superintendent if he could please clarify the status of the ABA city employees, please.
Do you want to dare him to do that?
Yeah, I'll ask. And so, we have had a number of folks helping us to continue. We have evolved from where we were, and so between Mr. Schwartz and Ms. Baldwin, they've had a, I guess, the lion's share of moving this forward. So, can you help shed some light for all of us, please?
So, to be absolutely clear in conversation with not only Mayor O'Leary, but obviously, Mr. Henry and the Board of Education, moving forward with the current budget, there will be no ABA therapist that will lose their position. No one's losing their position in the current budget year. So, moving forward, what the RFP is doing is exploring options if there is attrition, but no ABA therapist will lose employment with the Waterbury Public Schools. Okay?
Thank you for that clarification. Commissioner Serrano, do you have that?
Yeah, I just, because, so there was a lot of back and forth and a lot of confusion in my part, and it was, as you guys already know, it was an emotional whole month for me, being, you know, having a child with autism, it was really important for me to really get that information. So obviously, I did get some backlash, I got a lot of repercussions because I had voted yes last month, based on what we discussed we were voting on. So, I didn't know the impact of what the vote really entailed, so really moving...
me, being, you know, having a child with autism, it was really important for me to really get that information. So, obviously, I, I did get some, some backlash, I got a lot of repercussions, because I had voted yes last month, based on what we discussed we were voting on, so I didn't know the impact of what the vote really entailed, so really, moving forward, I do would like to, you know, request from the Superintendent and the Chair Committees that I would love to get the information ahead of time, so that I have time to process it, dissect it, ask my questions, get my answers, you know, moving forward. I, I don't want to compromise my integrity or my, my vote on something that I may not, you know, being new to this budget process, so I do want to request that we have another budget meeting, if possible, to continue this, this discussion moving forward.
Commissioner Awat, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to actually suggest that in light of that, which was about a $500,000 savings, and other things that we thought would transpire and may not transpire in our budget assumptions, that it would be necessary in the next ten days or so to, to look at that. My question also is, at what point is the education budget before the alderman? Do we have that date yet?
Yeah, I believe it to the fifteenth.
The fifteenth, so I think we need to make sure that our Budget Committee convenes before the fifteenth, and I'll be sending out an email in the morning.
Thank you, yes.
Asking for convenient dates for all of us, as well as the administration, so that we can work together to look at some alternative things in the budget, to make sure that we come in with that number that we projected, and see what other cuts or changes we may have to make, to make the, make the budget balance.
Thank you. I do know that the, there were two budgets that were JF'd out of the Appropriations Committee a week ago, a week ago Friday, and the one version, I believe is the Democratic version, does restore funding to TEAM, which is the mentoring program for new teachers, that was restored, and I do believe that there was an additional five, five or ten, I think maybe even $10 million added to the ECS formula, so there might, there might be more dollars, so I, I appreciate that, because it's still a moving target, we're not quite sure where it's going to end. One version adds, holds no towns harmless, the other version cuts funding to some towns and not other towns, so there's a lot of, of negotiations taking place, so I think, I think we need to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want, thank you, Madam President, I just really want to end by saying, I'm really proud to be on this board, you know, being there, there's still a lot to learn, I think your strength is your knowledge, so I'm really eager to learn, you know, the entire process, and I know it's not going to be easy, especially doing budget cuts, that's probably one of the most difficult decisions that we have to make, but I really want the constituents to know, I want to build a narrative where the Board of Ed can be transparent and, and communicate, and give them the, the most accurate information possible, and really gain the public's trust, you know? And, and again, it's, it's a learning process for me, so I appreciate the time, and at the end of the day, really, all the negative comments that, that, that I got from that only really made me a stronger person, and it's only going to make me eager to, to continue to move forward, so it's, it's just going to make me even stronger. So, thank you, Darren and Superintendent Henry, for clarifying that, so that the public can understand, including myself, a better understanding of what it is that was going on, and I appreciate the further discussion. Commissioner Awat, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you. And Commissioner Sorano, Commissioner Sorano, we all want the public to, I mean, that, that's why we're on this board, so understand that we all want that, as Commissioners. I want to just take quickly some time to just thank the NAACP for the sessions that they held on Saturday. I'll, I'll wait for Commissioner Thierio to, uh-huh. The sessions that they held on anti-bullying. Anti-bullying is not only, or bullying is not, bullying is not only a local issue, but is also a national issue. From the two sessions that were held, we found that there is a need for training, particularly how we know, you know, how we notice, what, what types of behaviors are there that, that can indicate that bullying is, is taking place in our, in our children. We also need to provide training for our parents in regards to our policies. If, if it's suspected that there is bullying going on, then, you know, there are, there are procedures that, that should be followed, and we need, we, as a Board of Education, teachers, administrators, et cetera, need to ensure that we are following those procedures. I had the opportunity to meet with, speak, the special ed, where's Melissa? Am I getting it right? Our special ed district council, and they had suggestions in regards to, for example, the forms appear on the website, but the form, where the form appears is different from where the policies appear, so we want to put the form and the policy together, so that parents know that they can not only read the policy, but also have the form, and I also understand that the form is somewhat difficult, a little bit confusing, so we're going to be looking at that as well. So, I'd, I'd like to, Madam President, offer, suggest that we put together a task force to look at this. Bullying is, is really, you know, it's very emotional, we, we found that at, you know, you know, Commissioner Tom Van Stone, Commissioner Sordano, Ordonno, Commissioner Sweeney, attended these sessions, and we need to have more, and we need to do more to educate, you know, our parents, et cetera, so I'm going to put that as a suggestion. Also, we are, we, we mentioned May eighteenth, the, the parent convention, we have different workshops, and I want to mention that the awards begin at 12:15, but the, the session, the convention begins at 8:00 AM. There are places, I think we have on the website, you can register, Nancy, is Nancy still here? Okay, that, on the website, is it right in front with the district?
Yes.
Okay, the district information is that they can register on the website, also I have some enrollment forms if people need that. Parent and Community Engagement, what's in it for you? Now, one of the, what, the workshops that I requested that it be considered or be included is a special ed workshop, which will introduce or clarify the different, you know, words that are used, PPT, you know, IED, you know, and, and what exactly that is. We're finding that our parents will go in, something happens, parents go in, they have to go to a PPT or IED, and all these people are there, and it's like this audience of folks, and they, it's very intimidating, and they don't, number one, the parents don't know what to expect, and then it's just really intimidating for them, so hopefully, we can, you know, clarify things like this. In addition, and I know this is going against Mr. Henry and his wishes, but I was contacted by SEPCO, which is the Special Ed PTO, which is the, the state level, a representative from there, and he would like to come and speak to parents and provide training, et cetera. Again, you know, emphasizing, you know, the, the education, and just making sure that our parents are, are enlightened on what they need to know, and also that they can advocate for their, for their, their students, so, so I'm looking at, hopefully, setting up a meeting soon on that, Mr. Henry, and I may do it through the ad hoc committee meeting, I may just, just go ahead and just do that, so look for that to, to occur. But I want to just make sure that the parents are aware they're at this conference, one of the workshops will deal with special ed. So, please, if you can make it, May eighteenth, from 8:00 AM to 1:30 PM, at the Nuggetuck Valley Community College, and awards begins, that session begins at 12:15. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There's no executive session?
I have something.
Oh, okay, Commissioner Thierio.
I certainly hope that in the future, and in the past, we look at every single board member here, and look at anyone that has taken, if I'm going to be held to a standard, I want every other board member to be held to the same standard, including summer school or any other programs that the Board of Ed Education sponsors. And my point is, having had a city job, does that mean you can't run for the Board of Education because you are paid by the Board of Education? You're paid by the federal government, as I said, that's a violation of the Hatch Act, otherwise, but we'll let, we'll let this go through the, and I would request, through the Chair, representation from the Corporation Council regarding this also. I have as much right as any other person in central office, and I would request legal counsel from the Corporation Council. That's all I have to say to that. And I know I'm normally the preacher of gloom and doom, and after my tirade tonight, I don't think I'm going to be Mr. Congeniality soon, but I do fight for my rights, and I do fight for my forty-nine years in education. Forty-nine years, and I certainly won't be dragged through the mud by anyone at any time, unless these allegations are substantial and founded, which I think they're not. But the Board, I pass some information out to you regarding the graduation rates, and the graduation rates, and I kind of looked at it from the standpoint of the decline of graduation at our three main high schools, Crosby, Kennedy, and Willby. You can see that the, just taking a quick look over there at Crosby, you can see at one point in time, in the year 2006, nearly forty-six percent of our students were lost. You know, it's funny that we, we do the kumbaya for the nine percent increase in terms of the graduation rates, but I don't remember before ever really looking, or the Board looking at, the delirious graduation rates in the past. If you look at Kennedy, for the year 2000, we lost fifty-five percent of the freshman class. I don't remember any big investigation as to why that was happening. This goes all the way back to 1997, that's a long time. It's twenty-one years. And by the way, I kept track of this data when I was on the board, when I wasn't on the board, I kept track of it. But that's why maybe some people are angry at me, because I am so fastidious with the information and the facts. I can understand that. But when we look at the recent, there is a reason to celebrate, because with regard to Crosby, last year, we only lost twenty-five percent. So, that means we graduated about seventy-five percent. And by the way, this information is based on the ED-006s. The ED-006s that I requested for six weeks, and finally, had to get them through a Freedom of Information Commission request to the Corporation Council. So, now you see why I'm not well-liked. And then, we go over to Crosby, Kennedy, Kennedy had only lost sixteen percent, so they graduated eighty-four percent, which is substantial. And then we go to Willby, who only lost, well, only, lost twenty-eight percent of their students. So, that's quite a bit of students, isn't it? Huh? That's quite a bit of students. So, twenty-eight percent, seventy-two percent graduated, if I did my math right. So, and then there's a couple of articles here about graduation rates mean little, from the Waterbury Republican, American, Chris Powell.
Commissioner Thierio, could you please ask your question or your statement? I'm not sure what business you're referring to right now.
It's both.
If you're quoting newspapers and, and opinion.
If you don't want me to do.
What is the specific business that you'd like us to hear tonight? If you're quoting, if you want us to look at graduation rates, we'd be glad to look at graduation rates, but I don't feel it's appropriate to give us a tutorial on public opinion by newspaper people.
Yeah, okay.
So, please, if, if you want us to look, if your request is to have us look at your data.
Yeah.
And graduation rates, I think we'd be glad to do that.
Fine.
But I don't think it's appropriate, I mean, so we'd be glad to look at your data.
That's, that's a good point, because this is exactly why I speak from the podium up there. Exactly why I go and I speak as a member of the public.
Commissioner?
Where I can't be shut down. Okay, I, I get your point. So, because you don't want to have the Republican, American.
I feel that it's, we would love to have your opinion and your, and your feedback, but there's a point where if it's just opinion, and you're not asking the Board to deliberate anything specific, or if it's part of the, the good of the whole, what you want for the school district, what you're really asking us, I, I mean, giving us the data is great, but what do you want us to do with the data? We have a strategic plan that we're working on, I think this continuous berating and, and about scores, and without the context of what the district is trying to do about the scores, and how we're working hard to move the district forward, I, I think it's a disservice to the students, to the community, and to the hard-working staff, and I know you don't mean it to be that, but I think this continuous kind of negativity around scores, I, I don't see the purpose unless I'm missing something. I think your work is admirable, and I know you care, and you have worked in this district so long, and I know you are a man of integrity, John, I've known you for many years, but I really think that.
I'm glad somebody thinks so.
I, I really think that we have to have a purpose for this discussion. I don't see a purpose right now, I just see, you know, some opinions, which is fine, but what if I let every single board member sit here for ten minutes and, and give us their opinion? It, it just, it's not productive, John, I don't think. But anyway, that said, if you could please summarize.
Yeah, sure. I want to know where is that line? And I noticed you're giving your opinion right now, so.
I'm giving a ruling.
A ruling? Oh, eating.
Point of order, please. This is the Board of Education that sets an example for the students in the districts, and right now, we are doing a poor job, and I'm not going to continue to sit here and be a part of it, so thank you very much and good night, but this is not the way we should behave, this is on television, we have parents here, this is unacceptable. For you, John, quite frankly, if you were in a classroom, you'd have been sent to the principal's office, sir, and I'm asking that we please end this meeting right now, thank you, I'll move to adjourn.
And I have many times.
Could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
The last report, you asked me to get to the, you asked me to get to the report, I'm getting back to the report, which was the enrollment, the last data is a piece of enrollment.
Motion to adjourn.
Regarding 2004 to 2007.
There's a motion, there's a motion on the floor to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.
That's the, that's democracy. That's the.
All in favor?
Aye.